Call the regular meeting of council Monday, March 13th. Back to order, we are here at seven o'clock. Looking for approval of the agenda.
Move approval, your worship.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation. Nice to see a bunch of people out there. It's your turn. You get to come and speak to council if you have something to say. Come on right up. Thank you.
Good evening, your worship. I'm Mr. Wright and I reside on Mary Anne Crescent. According to the City of Colwood's website, on December 1st, 2014, your worship stated, and I quote, "We will have some tough decisions to make, but we will make them in an atmosphere of mutual respect and an absolute consideration of what is best for our community as a whole." End quote. If it would please your worship, I would like to speak about the most recent meeting of the Committee of the Whole. For those members of the public that may not be aware, the Committee of the Whole has been called to review the City of Colwood's proposed $22 million budget. According to information presented by city finance staff, this is a budget that has increased by 13% from last year's actual costs. As a resident who attended three of the committee's meetings this year, I am left with some important, unanswered questions that I expected would have been asked by members of the committee during their consideration of the financial reports presented to them. Your worship, given that the amounts held in reserve by the City of Colwood represent less than seven months of the city's projected core operating costs, why did the committee not see this as an extreme risk to the fiscal well-being of our community? One reasonably foreseeable unfortunate natural or contractual event and the city may find itself with no reserve funds at all. Yet the minutes must show that not one question was put forward by a committee member on this topic. Your worship, what has caused me the greatest concern is that six of seven committee members invoked closure by passing a motion to direct the budget approval bylaw be drafted without hearing any report as to the core budget costs by operational department. The core operating costs, in excess of $17 million, represent 76% of the budget. The public heard from committee members concerned about special projects like swing sets and summer make-work programs, yet when it came to the city's core deliverables, the committee ignored its own approved agenda by omitting item 3.3 prior to passing its motion. I am certain your worship would agree, that does not appear to be an example of absolute consideration. The program directors and senior staff of each department were present for two evenings, waiting patiently to present their core operating goals to the committee, yet they were not given an opportunity to do so. When a committee calls staff to be present and then largely ignores them, it does not appear to the taxpayers that an atmosphere of mutual respect exists between council and city staff. Further, your worship, members of the public were denied the opportunity to hear how 76% of their tax dollars are to be spent, or to ask a question, ask questions about the core operating goals and expenses of our city. Was this the intent of invoking closure? Or were six out of seven members of the committee unaware of what they were doing? Through your chair, I will leave it to the members of the committee to let their conscience decide the answer to that question for themselves. With great respect, I request your worship commit to speaking with the membership of the Committee of the Whole, to ask them to reconsider and rescind their premature motion to direct the budget bylaw be drafted at this time. And further, that the committee reconvene and complete their exercise of your promised absolute consideration with respect to the $17 million of core budget goals by department that have not yet been addressed. In my opinion, as a taxpayer, only thereafter would the Committee of the Whole be in an informed position to direct city staff with regard to bylaw development. Your worship, the citizens of Colwood look forward to your leadership on this matter at the next meeting of the Committee of the Whole on March 20th. Those are my questions and comments for this evening.
Any other members?
Your worship, members of council. My name's Tim Murphy and I'm the vice principal at Wishart Elementary School. And with me are some of our students and amazing parents, as I know some of you know them as well. We're here to, we've submitted a proposal in a letter asking for funds to support a Community Connections mural on the outside of our school. And I think you should have a copy of that. I sent that last week. The reason we feel this is an important project is that when you enter a school, when you enter any property, you want to know what that property is about. We're an elementary school, we're across from City Hall, and we are the center of what a community is. You lose the school, you lose the community. We are one of several schools, but we are the largest, one of the largest elementary schools in Colwood. We had a mural outside of the school for nearly 25 years, and that has since unfortunately, due to weather, and we've had to paint that over. And our staff and certainly our parents, our parent advisory committee have raised $3,500 to try and get this mural going. And we are asking that council match these funds so that we can go ahead and put a Community Connections mural that would represent, I think, Colwood well, and certainly tell you and show you what we are all about. It was very nice to see your worship, as well as councillor Day, at our kickoff of our literacy week today. So I do know that you know that school and education is very important. And as you can see, we do have lots of support. There were going to be many more, but we certainly couldn't have everybody here present. So we do have two artists ready to go. We are prepared to move forward fairly soon. And if we, and if we are successful in this submission, then we would be prepared to have this completed by June, by the end of June. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? And giving you another chance, any other members of the public? Seeing none, then we'll move on. Thank you very much, everybody. Mayor's message, yes, I was. Okay. In attendance, and I just want to say hi to some of the children that were there this morning while we did reading, and there was one from Ms. Stewart's class I see there. Yeah. So anyways, yeah. Councillor Day and I had a great time in class, reading stories to the kids, so it was great. All right, we'll let you get away. Thank you so much for coming in. So councillor Day and I did attend the kickoff to reading literacy this week. We attended at Wishart School, but I believe all the schools in the area were doing their own form of reading is a good thing for all of our kids. So thank you for coming and sharing time this morning at that event. Nothing else jumping out at me, anything from council from over the last couple weeks? Councillor Noll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Anybody driving down the lagoon may have noticed that Public Works is hard at work down there. I wanted to pass compliments on to Public Works staff. What they are doing is restoring the shoulder of the road on the lagoon side, filling it, packing it, so it'll be easier walking for our residents, people with carriages and so forth. Public Works also took the time to take several members of ELSI and walk the entire length of the lagoon, explaining exactly what was being done, and gave the members of ELSI a chance to say, this plant should be dug up and moved, or that one doesn't have to be. I really appreciate the extra effort they made to involve ELSI, and I'm looking forward to that walking path being finished. It will be a lot more fun to walk.
Thank you. Also handed over to me by councillor Martin is at West Shore Parks and Rec on Monday, March 27th. They will be doing a Nordic pole walking demonstration. So anybody who's been interested in that particular activity, they will, they've actually created a trail walk through on the site there, so there'll be a ribbon cutting and inaugural walk, and a chance to try it out and see what makes swinging those poles so exciting.
My brain just ticked over and I remembered that I should share with you that the intermunicipal advisory committee on disability issues hosted another music night at Caleb Pike House in Highlands this past weekend. We try to offer an opportunity to both able-bodied and people with disabilities to come out and socialize. It helps to make a welcoming atmosphere for people who might otherwise find it difficult to imagine getting out, giving some extra support. And it's generally available monthly, so if you have a look at the website, you're more than welcome to join us.
Great, thank you. And last chance for council, nobody? We're good, thank you. Looking for adoption on one set of minutes for this evening, regular meeting of council February 27th?
Move adoption.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Two sets of minutes to receive, one for Committee of the Whole for February 20th, and the other Heritage Commission November 9th.
Move receipt.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. We do have a couple of pieces of correspondence, the first being the one from Vice Principal Tim Murphy in regards to their letter of request for the Community Connections mural. Councillor Logan?
Your worship, I'm happy to move that the City of Colwood contribute $3,500 from the City of Colwood's arts reserve towards the Community Connections mural at Wishart Elementary.
Discussion, council? Councillor Noll?
Just one question on the budget they presented for this. It's a budget of about $8,700 and 7,000 of that is salaries.
With which?
7,000 of the 8,700 is salaries. And I'm not sure if these are teachers we're paying, or artists, or...
I think it's the artists.
What? It's $3,510 for each of two people, saying 36 hours prep touch-up in class time. So I'm just wondering, are we paying teachers' salaries with our money?
I believe these are, judging from the notes in the budget, that those are artists. I know those two names, they are definitely not teachers at the school.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. My daughter's an artist herself, and I know they're all underpaid.
Councillor Day?
Sorry, that was my concern also, and just when I read through the budget, it does name the artists in their letter, and that's whose salaries it's going to cover. And when my children, who are well and truly grown up now, went to Wishart School, there was a beautiful mural, and it really did form a part of the community. And when there was a re, what would you call it, a refacing of the school and a spruce up, unfortunately, it was lost. So this is going a long way to bring back some life into the community that was lost.
Any further comments? All those in favor then? Posed, motion carried. Second piece of correspondence is from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, reversal of recent amendments to RCMP auxiliary constable program. I think this is more or less for information purposes only, council, because we did pass along a resolution through to UBCM, and now that the whole auxiliary program has been revisited and looked at, and that there is a plan in place, I think this is simply just information for us.
Move receipt, your worship.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. New business planning and land use, 6.1.1, report on the Colwood Corners parking variance, update, development, and agreement. Staff?
Thank you, your worship. The report before you addresses a request from the developer of the Colwood Corners Development to revise an existing development variance permit and to address floor area allocations and green roof requirements within the existing development agreements for the subject properties. The applicant is requesting to update the previous approved variances for off-street parking issued to address a larger portion of the site and to include parking requirements for additional uses, such as restaurants and offices. The proposed development includes surface and underground parking with an excess of 211 parking spaces beyond what is expected to be the demand as calculated by Watt Consulting Group. Additionally, the applicant is requesting amendments to the existing development agreements, which include administrative changes to the allocation of gross floor area for the different uses and to address green roof requirements for six to three-story, excuse me, three to six-story buildings. An increase in density is not proposed for the site, and it has actually been downscaled from the original city center development project. The applicant is proposing to provide intensive green roofs over 75% of the roof areas on buildings that are three to six stories in height, in place for existing requirement for 50% of the roofs of those same buildings to be intensive green roofs. The applicant has accommodated increased amenity space throughout the site, including a children's play area, a private and public plaza, and additional pedestrian friendly infrastructure and landscaping throughout the site plan. The applicant has worked closely with staff to enhance pedestrian environment and landscaping throughout the site. As a result, staff have no objections related to the parking variance updates for the development agreement amendments. Council may wish to consider updating the off-street parking relaxations and amending the existing development agreements as proposed. Thank you.
Councillor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I'm happy to make the recommendation, move the recommendation.
Seeing none, oh, councillor Day?
Sorry, I was just thinking for a moment there. In the interest of the public understanding what we're talking about, is it possible to put some of the pictures up for the public to see?
Do you have that PowerPoint piece in? That we might be able to just sort of show the difference between what was in the original plan, perhaps, and then maybe where we are now, and even...
There is quite a bit of supporting documentation in the package that's in the agenda, including the site plan, and the previous league assets plan is reflected in the information that was provided with the previous parking study. Certainly, the public can take a look at that. I can bring up some images on the screen, but there is quite a bit in this agenda item to describe the previous proposal.
And my other question then was, looking at the, I don't know, my iPad is not cooperating as per usual tonight. I don't think it likes this big document, seems to be what the problem is. But looking at, just at the site plan, I can't tell right off the bat which buildings are going to have the green roofs, and I just wondered if you could detail which ones would have the 75% green roofs.
So all of the buildings between three and six stories in height will have green roofs, so that is the majority of the site, not including the existing lawn and drugs and commercial units that are going to be refurbished. The low-rise along Suk Road, that's buildings four, five, and six, and the central building, building seven, aren't required to have green roofs. The remainder, under the current development agreement, do have to have green roofs, and building one at the front of the site would have a intensive green roof that would be open to residents of the site as well.
Great, thank you. That clarifies quite a bit.
Anyone else? Councillor Logan?
Thank you, worship. I just feel the need to recognize the efforts that staff and the developer have made in working together and getting to where we're at today. And I know there's been a lot of back and forth, and I think a lot of give and take on both sides, and you know, I really, I really have to commend both, both staff and the developer for working well together. And I think at the end of the day, the public just wants us to move on and get this project built. They're quite excited, and I think with the changes that have been proposed over the course of the, of the year, I think they'll be that much happier. It's much more pedestrian-friendly, looks nice, I think it's going to go a long way with revitalizing that area. So kudos to both staff and the developer on that one.
Councillor Noll?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just one question through you two staff. The report says by going from intensive green roofs at 50% coverage, we will be getting extensive green roofs at 75% coverage, but that is not reflected in the recommendation. It just says require extensive green roofs for buildings between three and six stories. It makes no mention of the percentage coverage. I was wondering if that's covered in the building bylaw, or whether we should add that as an amendment to that recommendation.
Your worship, the change from 50 to 75% reflects the proposal by the applicant. If council would like to see certainty on that issue in terms of what the resolution that comes forth from this meeting, by all means, it could be an amendment that would just provide a little bit more clarity.
Thank you. I'd like to move such an amendment to recommendation two, I guess, two-two, require extensive green roofs for buildings between three and six stories, such roofs to represent 75% coverage at least.
Second.
Any discussion on that amendment? All those in favor? Posed, motion carries for that? Back to the main recommendation? Anything further? Councillor Noll?
Thank you. I think I already know the answer, but I'm just, I'm through the chair to staff, just so that it's said. We're looking at a fairly large relaxation in parking spots, and obviously, the public will be concerned that that will push the responsibility onto public streets. And I just would like to reconfirm through staff that this relaxation of parking spaces will not add an additional burden onto public roads by reducing those spots.
Your worship, the due diligence that's been conducted by the developer includes a professional parking study that's tried to use comparables to understand what the impact will be. Staff has accepted that report to meet our standard for the due diligence. That's not to say that spillover parking could become a problem in the future. Generally, with urbanization of suburban sites like this, there are a clash between expectations for people that are used to be able to park wherever they want for free, to a situation where there's a value attached to that parking, and therefore, you have to pay by the hour. So that is generally the, I think, the challenge that we see at this site. It's not necessarily that there won't be enough parking, but that there'll be expectations between the newcomers to the site and existing residents. So we think the applicant has done a sufficient job at showing that there won't be an inordinate impact to the neighborhood, but I expect there will be some growing pains as with any development of this scale and scope.
Yep, good. Anybody else? Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried, thank you. Next item on our agenda is under Protective Services, 6.2.1, municipal bylaw enforcement annual report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The bylaw enforcement officers put together an annual report every year in order to keep council and staff and the community apprised of the various types of things that they manage throughout the year, which goes beyond just municipal bylaws or bylaw enforcement. They have a very successful graffiti outreach program that has got our graffiti vandalism at a five-year low, something that we're very proud of, and it's supported by businesses in our communities who provide supplies and paint and so on. The bylaw enforcement team actually monitors concerns that are related to 17 different city bylaws that encompass 284 different regulations, so there's quite a, quite a bit of information that they need to have everywhere they go with everything that they do in order to manage all of those things properly, not just for the community, but for city staff. Their file volume has almost doubled since year 2012, where they had 765 actions, and in 2016, they had 1,397 actions. Of particular interest is 738 of those actions in 2016 related to roads, boulevards, parks, and parking. So I think they're doing very good due diligence trying to take care of those issues, although in 2017 and moving forward, we'll probably see those numbers decrease a little bit because we're changing a little bit of the type of work and type of actions that they do manage, moving some of the items over to our police services, who now have a full contingent and a traffic, traffic team that can better monitor some of these areas for us. So our bylaw division's going to be able to have more time to spend assisting our planning, engineering, and building departments with a lot of their enforcement or development activities that are taking place in the community. So I think that'd be a good transition for them from one area to the other. Bylaw Division puts a lot of focus still on public safety. In 2016, they helped the police and fire services by responding to 212 calls for service or assistance. Some of those may include traffic control. They participate in our City Watch, which is a QP-sponsored initiative administered by the bylaw division. This program encourages city employees to take an active role in reducing crime and increasing public safety. Staff are trained to recognize, record, report, and respond to suspicious activity, public safety concerns, and emergencies in a safe and effective manner. And this is a program that also has participation by our Public Works crews. So we've been finding they've been extremely helpful in observing things happening in the community, or suspicious things in the community, and then calling in the appropriate help to mitigate whatever's going on. The bylaw enforcement officers also participate in our emergency management programs. They attend workshops and courses, they participated in emergency operations center exercises. One of them is now our deputy emergency program coordinator, assisting the coordinator in all of our training and planning for staff and events like shakeout, or just training like earthquakes or plane crashes, things like that. And they participate annually in the Regional Emergency Preparedness Fair that's always held at West Shore Parks and Recreation. Although our animal control services are taken care of by the Capital Regional District, they do provide assistance and service there sometimes as well, handling about 38 calls last year, which isn't, which isn't too bad, but it does, they do take a little bit of time. In the community, they try to be extremely active by having a public presence, they try to be the ambassadors of the community, where they're trying to show welcoming, friendly customer service, they help people wherever it's possible. In 2016, they had a number of calls for lost property, assisting the elderly, and they also were changing people's tires because it was something that the individual wasn't able to do themselves. They volunteer on our Community Policing Advisory Committee, which is a West Shore RCMP committee. They invite us to have a member. And every year, all three of them give blood donations to support the Canadian Blood Services. And they just make sure that they're out there helping with traffic control, special events, food drives, parades, movie shoots, handling outdoor concerns, they participate in Literacy Week, reading to the children at the elementary schools. And I think one of our most proud moments in 2016 was the City of Colwood being recognized for its contribution to the bylaw enforcement. And the Licensed Inspectors and Bylaw Officers Association of British Columbia presented the COO Cup Bylaw Officer of the Year Award to our bylaw enforcement officer, Phil Williams. So that was a pretty exciting moment, not just for bylaw division, but also for the city. So just a snapshot of what they did in 2016.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from staff, or council? Councillor Day?
Just to draw to your attention especially the graffiti removal, and what a big difference that's made. A number of communities have started down this road of trying to address graffiti because it brings down the ambience of your neighborhood. Instead of it being public art, it sometimes seems to degrade the neighborhood to a point where... where it can even cost losses in real estate value. And certainly, the investment has paid off with the reduction from an original amount in 2012 of $35,000 worth of estimated damage down to 2,600. So, we're under 10% of what it used to be in Colwood, which I think is a benefit for local businesses and residents alike.
Counselor Logan?
No, thank you, your worship. Counselor Day actually spoke to my point. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. First of all, I congratulate staff and the bylaw, and actually, all the staff on the City Watch program. I think the City Watch program's an incredible benefit to the whole community, and I do remember when that child was lost, and it was nice to have more than just a couple people looking for them, that we hadn't anybody who was out there looking. A couple of questions I have. The one is regarding animal control. There is a comment in here that says animal control, there was 38 animal concerns that they either addressed or assisted at. Sorry, this is on page 13 of the actual report. And my question is, why are they involved in that, and they're not just referring to the CRD, because we contract out to the CRD for animal control? And I guess I'm kind of curious why they're involved in those at all.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think it may be situational. I think sometimes they just may be the people who are in the area when something happens, or they may be the ones that come across the incident itself. So, they are authorized in our bylaws to do anything that has, that is covered in our animal regulation bylaw, and they don't always do it from beginning to end. They may manage it in the beginning, but it will be turned over to the CRD, and the CRD will take it over from that point forward.
And my second question is, just in the police-related calls in 2016, I'm just curious about the noise issue one. Do you know what that category included? Did that include, is that like loud parties, or is that like construction being dealt with, like blasting and those type of things? How is noise defined?
My understanding, and I can certainly find out for you in case I am wrong, there are times when the RCMP are getting calls about noise complaints, and if they know, because as you know, we work Monday through Sunday shift, particularly when they were short on staff, they will often radio the duty bylaw officer, because they always check in with the RCMP when they start their shift, and they check out when they're finished their shifts. So, if it is a noise complaint, sometimes the RCMP will actually call to, or radio to the bylaw division and find out if they're on duty, and if they are, ask them to respond to the complaint. This wouldn't be New Year's Eve, where there's noise complaints about those types of parties, but it could be different types of noise wherever in the community that somebody called the RCMP about, and possibly unaware that our bylaw officers work on a weekend, which is something we're trying to message out, their numbers and their contact info.
So, just as a clarification through the chair, or through the mayor, so what if somebody was wanting to complain about blasting or construction work? Construction work started before 7:00 AM. How is that defined? Is that still defined under noise, or is that defined under something else, under planning? The planning's dealing with it because, or engineering's dealing with it, because the construction started before they were supposed to?
Well, any of the, any of the statistics that are showing in here are things that they've been involved in. So, noise complaints or blasting complaints can come in at any time. The way our system works now as well, people can leave you a voice message, and that voice message is actually emailed to you, and you can listen to it on your phone, or you can get your email. So, because we do have the seven-day-a-week, all three bylaw enforcement officers get all those messages, so whoever is on duty is expected to try to respond immediately. If there's a reason, or on occasion, we may have a shift where only one bylaw officer works, and they've called in sick, but the very next day, the first officer in is usually the one taking the call and doing the follow-up. So, it really is just the duties the bylaw division or the bylaw members are involved in. It wouldn't be if somebody called the engineering department, complained about noise, blasting noise, but bylaw wasn't involved in that, that wouldn't be in the bylaw statistics. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Any further comments?
Your worship, just further on the noise. I know last year in particular, bylaw did respond to quite a few construction noise-related complaints, particularly on Sundays, and it was quite often the builders will play their ghetto blasters too loud while they're, while they're working, or it's circular saws and nail guns, and it's usually on the, on the Sundays that's the problem.
Thank you. Looking for receipt of the report? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Next item on our agenda is out of finance and admin, and it is a request to rescind the council resolution of January 23rd, where we made an appointment of the parcel tax review panel. It is not required, and so to take that off the books, we need to rescind our motion.
So, moved?
Any discussion, comments? Counselor Martin?
Yeah, thank you. I just didn't understand it completely well. When you said it doesn't need to exist, does that mean we're not this year, so we're going to process it next year? Got it?
We're not starting taxation.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Moving into bylaws, folks, bylaw, first on, or the only one on our agenda this evening, bylaw number 1628, for first, second, and third readings, Colwood, Maine, Sewer Local Area Service bylaw, Establishment Loan, number 5982001, amendment number 39.
Move introduction, your worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried? Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried?
Move fine.
Third?
Second, third?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried?
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried?